See through packets underneath the agenda for work section. The first two pages deal with the water department. The first page shows revenue and expenses, plus the transfer of what required money to reserve accounts. This is what the new water rates were projected to have an annual loss of just over $20,000. If you look at the second page, I've got the current rates that we're at now and then what they would be at different increases by percentage. I put in five percent increases. I zeroed in at exactly what percentage would cover that $20,000 deficit and that comes in right at 17 percent. That would raise the first thousand from 2415 to 26 or 2826 and then additional gallons will go from 1129 to 1321. If a customer had a 3,000 gallon bill, their bill would go from 4673 to 5467, an increase of $7.94.
Can tell you?
Yes.
Okay, can we stop here and everybody mark that little 17 percent there? I want to go back and talk about the assignment that you had. You might want to go into that so everybody can understand why you're doing these numbers. It's pretty soft, it's quite adorable, but I'd like to think. First of all, this is a work session, so we won't have any conversations with the audience because we have to talk about cost and everything's on the table. But we got together about this budget because we were three months into it and through your good recording of it and looking at the fact that there had been some rate increases that we hadn't increased to our sales, we started our work session meetings about three meetings ago. And the area that we really wanted to talk about first in our budget was going to be the area of water sewer because we felt like that's one of the reasons why we're using general funds for going down so fast is because of the use of water sewers. So in that exercise that we had the last couple of meetings, we asked Dave to do an in-depth review of water, the cost of our water, the selling of our water, the usage of our water, and the collection of our water, also our labor to run the water plant, chemicals and all that. So, and we looked at the goal of balancing the water sewer budget, at exactly what that cost would be. And as you can see, it's a pretty big increase on the first thousand gallons. Like Dave said, it's probably about like $7 if we went to 17 mile.
If we did 17 for the, did this include the first thousand and the additional thousand? If a customer used 3,000 gallons, that's just an example of what average people use, it would increase the, just the water side, seven, eight bucks basically, $7.94.
And this would increase our revenue by $70?
It would increase our revenue by $21,366.9.
And that's our shortfall as it is right now, basically.
That would cover the $20,000 before it's ever cured.
This kind of work, this is very important that we have an exact number. And so Dave, it's on your estimation that these numbers are close to exact?
Oh yeah, yeah, I took last fiscal year and I just put in the new rates for the water that we're perfecting, so.
Is there anything that could happen that could change that total? I mean, I know it's not for the overall, yeah.
Anything that happens, I mean, but it's as far as like, I mean revenue, that's what we're talking about now, the revenue side, but expense sides, I mean you've got your, these expenses could change, but they're pretty similar every year, you know, depending on factors.
From history.
But basically, everything seems to go up and never goes down, so.
The increase that we had before was last, an increase we had last year, a year of 2018, and then we had one for 2019. The 17 percent increase would cover both increases.
Yeah.
And then that would break our water budget even. And let's go away from that same type of percentage and look at the sewer, okay?
In sewer, I did the exact same thing. And as you can see from the first page on sewer, where it shows revenue and expenses, plus the transfer due to the reserve accounts required by USDA, that has a deficit of $23,000 annuals. Did the same exact breakdown on sewer numbers, a little more bleak. Did the percentages by five, got to zero in to cover that 23, and that came in at 27 percent. So that would increase the first thousand from 1895 to 407, additional from 788 to 1001, that would bring in a 23,538. As far as the impact on the customers, on a 3,000 gallon bill, the sewer side would go from 3471 to 4408, representing an increase on 3,000 gallons, total to be $9.37.
So if I was a customer and I'm fully watching my water bill, I had a water sewer bill that was using around 3,000 gallons, how much would that bill be?
If you, if, with the increase?
Yeah. The rate change.
Right.
17 percent.
Right, yeah, your bill would go from 3471 to 4408, and you'd have an increase of $9.37.
Sewer?
Just on sewer side here.
Okay, let's do the water side.
Water side. That would be the, to cover the 20,000, that we would raise it to 17 percent. As far as the impact on customers, their bill would go from 4673 to 5467, representing an increase on the customer of $7.94.
So put those two together, the average bill for 3,000 gallons of water is going to be how much?
I don't know.
Take your time.
$9.88.
$9.88 and 58 cents. So if I'm using 3,000 gallons of water in this town, my bill's going to be $9.88 and 58 cents. So this brings us to a very serious point here because we have a lot of people in this town that are retired. And already their water bill's high, they're trying to work within using just 1,000 gallons and trying to live within that. And taking it much higher than that takes away some of their other things they should have like coffee and wine. And so I'm thinking when I see this large number that it's important for the city to be, and the citizens of the city, to be responsible and support the water department. And we do appreciate having good water in the sewer system, but do we have to do this all at one time? Can it be, you know, kind of, maybe go along and done partially over a year or two year budgets to finally balance in a year and a half or two years? Do we take the cost right now and say, this is what the bill's going to be, just to break even? Or do we look at the first thousand gallons and not raise it at all? Leave the first thousand gallons at our old rate and raise our, put in the new rate into the two or 3,000 gallons? This is for the people that really work hard for that 1,000 gallon limit. And I know a lot of people do, have been witness to that. Now, that's not to say we have to do that, but we have to think of the residents of the city and their income. And we do have to think about our city being successful in surviving this crisis. So saying that we could raise our rate to cover our expense with a pretty hard numbers that you've just given us, 98.58 for 3,000 gallon usage for water sewers, that takes care of the problem. We work a little bit with the rate for the people that are trying to work within their 1,000 gallons and maybe not raise the rate there, is that a possibility that we could do with our computer, you know, and building? We could find out. The other thing is, do we balance our budget on the back of our city residents on water? Or do we try to work with our cost? So I think that to be responsible, we should take a little bit away from the cost of what we do here in the city and put a little bit on the increase of the water and somehow come into the middle and balance the budget. I think that's a reasonable.
Where else you didn't make the 17 percent?
That's what this work session's about.
I may have been a question.
You brought up city services. One of the things we want to do is we want to supply the best possible service to our community. That means in our park, in our streets, in our water, in our sewer, and in our protection of the residents that live here, the people that do. So if we look at each department and we say, okay, well, we'll just not have a police officer anymore, and that's going to save us $50,000 a year, and we can not have to raise the water rates that much, but if you raise them a little bit, well, that takes away a little bit from public safety. Maybe, maybe we don't need to have a full-time police department, maybe we want a part-time police department. Maybe we don't want to raise the water revenues all the way up on the first thousand gallons, but a little bit up. Maybe we want to put these gradual so that within a year and a half or next year's budget we balance. All those are important, and I'm looking for you to make more suggestions, but just giving you a kind of a broader way of maybe looking at it that we just don't raise the water rates to balance the water budget.
Well, I think we could probably attack the expenses in several counts, not just police. You know, if we divided that up and then also tacked on a little to the water, I think that would be favorable to everything, or more favorable.
So what we've asked Dave to do in that area, that gray area that we're talking about right now, having massages to make it work, is we have, we have job descriptions for all of the employees. And it's not that we definitely want to replace any of our employees, but we were talking to the water department about taking samples every day. Do we have to take samples every day, Frank?
We've got to take water samples every day.
Every day. And that takes a city employee to know to qualify person to do that. It doesn't mean that it takes an eight-hour day to do that. How much time do you spend on water sample?
That's easy, and one time, it can be anywhere from, you know, checking the meter, checking the chlorine, making sure chlorine's pumping, checking, it normally takes an hour or two. I mean, it's just.
But either, either our city water employees could do that. They could do it or.
So two hours at the most, right? Two hours at the most, basically.
Basically, as long as nothing's wrong.
Yeah. And that, and then Dave, we have a full-time clerk here, and it's reasonable. And then the other calls that we have as far as expenses goes is collection. And we, like I said, we're not talking about taking employees out of the work, we're talking about how we can increase our water rates without increasing our expenses to collect the water. And we talked about if we raised our water rates to the 17 percent level, that would increase collections by how much?
I haven't figured out.
Take your time.
She makes 6 percent, so if we raise rates to bring in like an additional 20,000, I think it'd be about 2,400.
2,400.
I gotta get that over.
But if we increase the rates on our citizens to balance the budget, and then we give the clerk a $2,400 raise a year to collect that, since it's really just the same work, maybe we don't want to go that way either. Maybe we want to see, be more physically responsible for our residents and say, look, we're going to raise your water rates, but everybody's not getting a raise in this room. You know, we're going to keep a water collector, but we're not going to be increasing the amount of money made by the collector. I think that's a reasonable thing. I don't know how we do that, just like with 1,000 gallons, not charging the new rate for the first 1,000 gallons. I don't know how we do that either. But through systems, we ought to be able to work that out and show the residents of this city that, one, we could balance the budget, and, two, not on just the backs of them paying their water bill, that we should be able to work with each of our services to perform at a more effective call number. So Rose, you know, you have some interesting insights on this too, because we talked about water samples and stuff like that, and we talked about how our city employees work. One of the things that we see that's outstanding in this budget is that comp time. And where we know we have to have qualified men and women take samples of water, and we want that done for the safety of our residents, we're not going to be able to go forward using overtime to do this, to perform our daily duties or weekly duties as employees. I think we'd have to look at taking that out. How do we do that? I don't know, but we need to do it. We need to say, a 40-hour work week is what we have to work, our men and women that work in the water department, there is no overtime. How do we do it without overtime?
So this comp time is basically overtime?
Yes. And we owe it, and it's something we've been paying, but do we, do we raise the water rates to cover comp time and cover extra, raise for the city collector and, you know, all this, or do we try to work on those things? I think that in the area of employees, and Dave did a good job giving us their job descriptions of what they work, and now I know, you know, we really need them. One thing that we could do is eliminate overtime. Is that a scheduling issue, Frank, that we do something like that? Is there something, do you all overlap now any kind of?
You can't really, I mean, you can't really get rid of overtime. I mean, they're impossible, I mean, what we normally do, and I've been doing it here lately, Mike's been doing it, because nothing's really going on inside the city, so we've been taking a few hours here and there. We come in, do our tests, make sure no water meters are, you know, people call them because of water meters or grinders or anything like that, and then we might take a few hours off that day to start dropping our comp time then. But the thing about it is, it's comp time, and I know it's time and a half whenever we work overtime, and it's basically personal time that we use after, but we're not actually getting paid for it, but we are getting paid for it. We're getting basically straight time, but it's overtime, so we're getting a time and a half, so we're getting an hour, you know, so we're getting a time, an hour and a half for working an hour overtime. So the thing about it is, is with the whole big picture of that, like Mike comes in Saturday, Sunday to take care of the water. That's an hour, two-hour job, just depends on what he's got to do. If the tower ain't acting right, the chemicals ain't pumping right, it might take a little longer, it might take about the same amount of time, it just depends. The other simple fact is, is just like weekend, last weekend, you know, it wasn't something we wanted to do, but we had a sewer member, so that's seven or six and a half, seven hours, whatever that was, of time that we worked overtime. So what we've been doing lately is like he's been doing it, I've been doing it, we might have that overtime, so we'll try to use hours up before our two weeks if we do get overtime, and then we might cut into our comp time and start using that. I mean, we never know when we're going to get called out. I mean, my neighbor, for instance, his grinder went down, he come over to the house and said, hey, my grinder's down. And then, you know, that was an hour going over to see what was wrong with it, and then another hour, hour and a half to go and grab the tractor and pump it down the next day, you know, so, I mean, you never know when emergency call is going to come out, so, and you never know how long it's going to take.
And all that should be taken into consideration when we work on this new budget. That's why I wanted you to talk about that, and thank you for doing that.
Who is this, WJGRS? What is that?
Uh, the Payable Liability?
Oh, my source.
I guess my point is, at this, at this stage of the budget exercise, David, you've done an excellent job identifying, in your estimation, what it's going to cost to cover and balance our budget. So we know that now, we have a number to work with to balance our budget, we know we could do it on water. I think our task here now is to, I'd like to make a motion to have one more work session this month so that we can work on these issues, city employees, the comp time thing, think through it, know what's going to go with it, meet with Frank, you know, get involved in a work session with us, meet with the city collector and have her work with us on how we can work that water rate where perhaps on the first thousand gallons, we don't make a big increase, we make the increase on the second, third thousand gallons and make it more comfortable for people. Actually, how we could talk about rolling it in slowly and make a goal of a year and a half to a balanced budget instead of one year, so that everybody's not hit with everything at one time. And then, then talk about our police department and how we can better operate our police department to work within our budget. And come out there with a budget that you can approve, that you put your signature on, that we'll do, I think what we're looking at is our diligence. What we need to do now is get down to hard numbers and put together a hard budget at our next work session and present it, approve it, and going forward, always stay on top of balanced budgets for our city. Are we required by law of the state of Missouri to have a balanced budget?
I suppose so.
Now, that, we've got that pretty well settled, we need to talk about these CDs because it's just going on and on and on.
Well, I've got another question about if we implement this change, the effects of the change will take effect immediately, I mean, the increase of rates and reduce the cost and all these things. We wouldn't want to say it's not going to change, we're going to say that within a period of time we'll reach a perfectly balanced budget, but immediately we're going to see some changes in income once we get our hard numbers. But Dave, as far as the CD goes, at this stage of the game, there is no other way that I see possible to pay our bills going forward without cashing a CD, unless somebody else has got money they want to give us.
Right, if we don't have any CDs.
Do you say that?
A bunch of checks bouncing next week, and I will go to make payroll.
So you think if they do cash, how much time would that give us?
Do the next payment?
Well, hopefully longer than that, I mean, I'm just throwing out, I mean, you know, I'll say like a month and a half.
So there's a sense of urgency in implementing a balanced budget plan soon, like before the end of this month. So I'd like to see this, I would like to make a motion, Dave, that we, we have another work session for perhaps the last week of March where we actually work with you, with the fire chief, with the collector, with the mayor and the all beholdermen to put together some hard numbers for a budget we can sustain. And Mayor, I'd like to ask you to understand that after I looked all these numbers with Dave, that the cashing of the CD is probably the only way that we can do it at this point as far as these bills go.
If the board approves it, that's fine, but I'll go in and do it, not by myself.
But we all understand. So I guess the question is, how important is the new balanced budget? Are we all for a balanced budget? Mayor, are you for a balanced budget?
Well, of course I am, but we need to do something and do it right away. Now, when, how far away did you set that meeting, two weeks?
No, I'm thinking we'll have it in March.
March what?
Typically, when we have a second meeting, it's the fourth Thursday, which would be March the 28th.
28th, yeah.
Let's do that because that might affect our rate increase for the following month. It'll also be at the beginning of the month where we can talk about other expenses too.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
I guess second.
28.
28. Would you call and make sure that we have our city clerk there and the fire chief at that meeting, all the aldermen here, so we can lobby here.
Did you mean the collector?
I mean the collector, I'm sorry.
He means everybody.
All right. Anybody want a CD? Is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion if we catch that CD.
I'll second it.
Six and 1113. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I'll make a motion, we close the meeting.
I second that.
All right. Okay, where are you leading?
(Inaudible) United States of America, in your body for which stands, one nation, one God, and the visual liberty and justice for all.
All in, all in, Rose, Rose and Jane. All in Brian and all.
Here.
All in Jennifer Ryan.
Here.
All in Phil Ryan.
Okay. Flaming orders, I approve all the agenda. We'll make.
Make a motion to approve agenda?
Okay.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent agenda, make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent of agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, we've got public forum here, anybody want to speak? I don't, I don't. Okay, business, none.
You missed one.
Where's Kobe?
I'm finished this.
None.
Then three times?
I said it.
Four.
And, need to talk like the X. I'm sorry. Public forum, I'm getting business, none. No business. Okay, we'll go with the CD, okay, we got it.
So Madam Mayor, is this going to, issue going to be explained to us by our city clerk, or are you going to explain the CD issue?
Well, I can explain it like this, I hate to be, start messing with the CDs, when we do that, that's how to get it up. We need to do something to get this back in place, and we need to do it now, because otherwise it's going to really be bad. But I don't want to let him explain why. He thinks he needs money from the CDs, okay? You understand what I'm saying? Okay, so David?
Right, as of today, in my QuickBooks accounting system, General is in the negative over 11,000, Water is in the negative over 8,000, Sewer is in the negative over 2,000. This month already, I've transferred $2,100 from General and Water, and $3,100 from General into Sewer. I've completed cemetery, water deposit, police training, there's nowhere else to take money from. We've also got repairs coming up, the tractor's going to cost $4,300, cop here's $1,300, the truck needs to be repaired, the tornado starting to be repaired, so we can't wait to make payroll next week, much less these upcoming expenses. The one I have, looking at the list here, we get as close to where we need to be, would be to cash number one of six out of General and one 16, our sewer grinder, that give us about, one's 10,000, one's 1,700, that puts us where we finish this month and hopefully we'll have to pack one for a little while.
Okay, so Dave, is it on your estimation that if we cash the CD and that this catches us up, or will we experience this again in another two or three months?
Oh, I'd expect to cash another amount of time.
So tell us the values of our CDs now that we're able to use, how much money we have in CDs.
On the treasury report here, on the side that says monthly treasury reports, the bottom section there lists all our CDs. They're all fair game except for number 113, the sewer, the big one, $100,000, because we play that to the USDA, that way our monthly payment to them is less because we're holding that to them. But the rest are fair.
Well, you know, we're about to go into a work session discussing the budget, and I think it might be better to go ahead and take this into the work session, but since you're on the subject, as a city clerk and you're working closely with the budget every day, do you, what do you recommend as a city clerk? You're facing writing, paying the bills.
On the big picture?
Yeah, the big picture.
Well, we'll recover this in the work section, but I mean, water sewer rates need to go up because they've gone up on us and we have to pass that along to our customers, and you'll see each one's over $20,000 annual deficit, and I've been paying that money out of General, and General would pass the budget with a $53,000 deficit. So all the money we took in for taxes this year, that's supposed to last us for the entire year, is gone. And that's why we're already dealing with cashing out CDs just to stay in the black.
So what's the, what's that total value, what we have in CDs that can be cashed?
The two I'm looking at is number 106, which has a current value of $1,768, and number 116, which has a value of $10,607.54.
I'd make a motion that we carry this work session this evening before we make a reminder, Mayor.
That sounds like a good idea.
All right, I got a second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, hand this to the work session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And we're going to table this through five by five, that the least of my board is not. And we're going to table this through five by five. That's the least of my worries now. We're just going to get it out of the way because we've got a lot of important stuff to cover yet. We really have.
I have a question about that to the clerk. How do we get these ordnance on the agenda this evening?
At the last meeting, I had two aldermen sponsor to have this put on the agenda for this meeting.
Okay, and that is because we had, we wanted to define the law for a police department so that they could be able to say, you know, these areas are restricted and you can't use your vehicle along the public roads. So, but we're not tabling this issue tonight.
Well, I tell you what.
I'd like to have a first reading of the ordinance.
There's a new board coming on and it's just going to prolong.
There's new...
But if I table it, I think it should be tabled, shouldn't it? Or can he do this?
He, to put something on the agenda, it takes two aldermen to do it and they put it on the agenda so it's a live item for the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, so I got a motion for a first reading. All right, I have a second for... Okay, at least take roll calls. Roll call vote for first reading of Bill nine forty-nine. Alden Bryan Helms.
Here.
Alden Rose Rosensway.
Here.
Alden Jennifer Wise.
Yes.
Okay, first reading of Bill nine forty-nine and ordinance for utility golf carts and utility vehicles in the city of St. Mary. Motion for a second reading. I have a second for a second.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote for a second reading of Bill nine forty-nine. Alden Bryan Helms.
Here.
Alden Rose Rosensway.
Here.
Alden Jennifer Wise.
Yes.
Second reading of Bill nine forty-nine and ordinance for utility golf carts and utility vehicles in the city of St. Mary. So I motion that we put this ordinance into effect. All right, I got a second for passage.
I'll second that. Can we object to that? Can we question that?
Nope, you can't.
No question, no nothing?
You can't.
Come on. Roll call vote for passage of Bill nine forty-nine.
It does.
Alden Jennifer Wise.
Here.
Alden Rose Rosensway.
Here.
Alden Jennifer Wise.
Boy, he's using my hand. Okay, second.
No, I want to say.
It's not public forum yet.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
No, go ahead.
Bill number, in order to see St. Mary's, the diamond, St. Ginni, the courts, we're going to move all of our fines, all of our things and ups to St. Genevieve. And you can explain that one.
Yeah, since we can't meet the minimum standards under the new laws that would affect January two thousand seventeen, which says a court clerk cannot be part of the city, has to have their own separate person, has to have their own building, you know, and we can't afford to do that. So I put a proposal, I took it up to the county court to have our cases heard there. They would collect the court costs because they're operating the cost. We would still have our prosecutor because he knows our ordinances, but they would collect the fines and give us the fines for the violations. They gave the ten minutes to the judge and he gave it to, when he went for horn, the twenty-fourth judiciary circuit judge. And she said, yes, it's a good idea. In fact, I want this to happen within the next six months. So I put the date on this to take effect would be October first, which is six months and also beginning of our fiscal year. So just money wise, it would clean break budget terribly. So we still be able to write tickets and all that, but it'd just be held there instead of held here.
That makes sense. And we talked earlier, Dave, about the cost involved in having a clerk here for that type of stuff and that was tossed right up in the line.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, because they have to be, they have to work at least three hours per week, have their own office, you know, and then they can't be associated with the prosecutor or the police or the city. They have to be just underneath a judge by the rules.
So Madam Mayor, what do you recommend we do in this direction with this ordinance?
Oh, well, yes, we almost have to because we can't get a, build another office just for that.
I'll make a motion that we pass this ordinance into law.
I'll second it.
All right, roll call for first reading of Bill nine five one. Alden Bryan Helms.
Here.
Alden Rose Rosensway.
Here.
Alden Jennifer Wise.
Yes.
First reading of Bill nine five one and ordinance of the city of St. Mary, Missouri designating the St. Genevieve County Associate Circuit as municipal court for St. Mary, Missouri. Assessment of court costs provided for municipal court bonds in payment in lieu of court appearance.
Motion for a second reading.
All right, second for a second.
I'm sorry.
Roll call for second reading of Bill nine five one. Alden Bryan Helms.
Here.
Alden Rose Rosensway.
Here.
Alden Jennifer Wise.
Yes.
Second reading of Bill nine five one and ordinance of the city of St. Mary, Missouri designating the St. Genevieve County Associate Circuit as municipal court for St. Mary, Missouri. Assessment of court costs provided for municipal court bonds in payment in lieu of court appearance. I got a motion for a passage.
I'll motion pass.
Second for a passage.
Second.
All right, roll call for passage. Alden Bryan Helms, here. Alden Rose Rosensway.
Here.
Alden Jennifer Wise.
Here.
Bill nine five one passed.
Okay, we got police department continuing, continuation. Okay, what I was saying, I, come on, now I'm bringing this up before the board. They can talk about it, they can collect me. But do we really need a full-time pop? That's a lot of money we're paying out. That's just, it's brought up for y'all to discuss.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we take this into our work session this evening.
All right, that'd be fine. Okay, since, anybody that you have to say? You still want to say it? Okay, well then we're going to go to department reports.
I got a second on the most detailed work.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I got to get my stuff.
All right, cool. All I got is I got an official letter from FEMA that they closed out disaster four-two-five-oh, which was the New Year's Day flood of two thousand sixteen. Whenever FEMA gives you money, they can take that money back from you up to three years. If Inspector General Fines, if you did something wrong in the procurement or the process, we didn't anything wrong with a check either. But so that is officially done. So we don't have to worry about the first flood anymore and a couple...
Yeah, we've got another one.
Yeah, I know, we'll, they've pulled out the second one in about sixteen months, so.
Come back.
I'll let Frankie cover the upcoming stuff.
Are you doing it? Okay.
No, I'm not here. I can't do that.
Okay, come back when I get out of here, okay? Come back to me.
All right.
All right. In case I call that, I'm going to get a pair of me. We'll check out.
Yeah, you're right here. You're not standing there.
Yeah, we will. I've got lunch here.
I got a good food.
Okay, emergency management.
Oh, I get it. I'm good.
Fire department.
No, we're going to go for first.
Yeah, I had fourteen calls. I had twelve medic calls, one fire mutual aid for Perryville and one fire investigation. The, you guys know that we had a new compressor at our firehouse for our SCBA's. Sentinel does the servicing on them. And what they do is they change the oil, they change the purified filters and they check the air quality to make sure we're getting good air quality into our tanks that we breathe inside the household or even in our SCBAs. It's that time of year to service it and it's going to be six hundred forty-nine dollars and that's servicing it. The thing about it is it's still under warranty, so it's kind of hard for us to service it because if something goes wrong, then the company will not cover it if something go wrong with it. If they service it, that's because they're the ones who sold it to us. If something go wrong with it, then it's covered. So anyways, I'm, the guy contacted me from Sentinel last week, asking me about when we want to do it. Thought I might have to talk to you guys as a board to see where our fund was sitting and everything. So on that part, that's, I'm going to be another expense that we're going to have to put out on that. So I didn't know if you guys wanted to discuss that right now or if we can wait until the business meeting or whatever.
Are you going to be here for the business meeting?
I can be here.
Could you, because that'd be helpful.
Yeah. The other thing is we got a grant from the BFS railroad that me and Dave signed up for last October. I only got a partial of it. The amount I asked for, we didn't get, but I did still get five thousand dollars for that. That's being spent on some turnout gear to update our turnout gear because we're over twelve years old on a few of our turnout gear. So they recommend us to be under twelve years of age on our turnout gear. That's NPFA regulations, so. The other thing is we're having a pump operation class at our firehouse through the Missouri University tomorrow night and Saturday. So we will be using a hydrant for momentarily in our portable pump. So I will have where we keep track of what we're pumping. And we're not, I'm not trying to, where we don't pump a whole lot of water. If we have to, I'm going to try and see if we can draft out of the creek to pull water up to us. But we're going to see what they actually want us to do because they're the ones, it's a certified class. So we're going to see what their, the lead instructor, instructors like us to do on that part. Basically, we're going to be, we're going to be going over drafting, but they're going to be going over drafting, hydrant use, and I'm transporting water, so we're going to be going over all that. The other thing is too, is I'd like to say with the springtime coming on, I know people's going to be doing their yard waste, burning and everything. We did get called for an investigation in town because of somebody burning leaves and nobody knew that was actually going on. My protocol on that, it'd be nice if the public would actually call down to city hall here and tell Dave or even call my cell phone and let me know that a way, if they're burning, I know they're burning. That a way, join calling me and saying, hey, we're going to investigate a fire. I'm trying to run our apparatus. I'd rather to go out in my personal POV before I take an apparatus out and that's a cost on us and, you know, my guys. The other thing is, is, I mean, the ordinance on that, I mean, no burning after dark. We must have burnt it, no trash. And turn around, the winds are way over fifteen miles an hour. We don't want to be burned. That's just like a brush pile down here. I did that yesterday and burned it and they said the winds were going to get up, so I buried it. So it couldn't go anywhere, so. But other than that, that's all I got. You guys got anything for me?
Something, a little bit on that. I think that would be a good idea that if someone decides that they want to burn, I think they need to call down here to city hall, talk to Dave, let Dave know about it. And then Dave, you in turn, let Frankie know so that way you're not being by a margin, but everybody, you know, in the...
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
How do we get that word out to everybody?
The other question is, and I can put it on our website, well, actually Jody can probably put it on the website. I can put it on our Facebook page for the fire department. The other thing is too, is if somebody's burning a big brush pile or anything, I would like to know about it because we do have an ordinance where the fire chief or a member of the fire department actually goes checks in to see, make sure no power lines, it ain't within so many feet of our structure and all that. So Dave gets the phone call. He called me and says, hey, they're wanting to burn. I don't have a problem going checking out as long as I'm not busy. If I'm busy, then I'll have one of my other fire members to go check it out for me, so that's all I have where I'm now, so.
Can we also get that in the...
Okay, we got the police department.
I don't have as many as normal. First couple of weeks, I had the flu in February and recovering from it. But I still had eighteen ordinance violations, which I was marking up notices for. Dilettia vehicles, debris, dangerous buildings. Got eighteen of those. I got a couple more days before I did a citation, but it's not resolved. Had disturbance, had two murders assist. There was a wounded cat that had just taken to the vet so they could put it down. And had two investigations. See nothing major to report.
Okay, we got water and sewer. Hey, Frankie, could you tell them about this deal we got down here? So we need a decision on that. You don't want to?
What, which part?
Where that is dug up down there and the roof's off, rocks, stuff is just dumping in the ground.
Right here?
Right there, but you know where it's at.
Oh.
Yeah.
We got a clog actually up on Third Street in Locust. Well, actually from Second Ward to Locust. That's a one and a half inch line. What's going on there is we got a clog somewhere in between and we're needing to either have a jetter truck come in and jet it, which that's going to cost us a bunch of money for them just to get here to do it. And we don't even know if it's actually going to be effective. The other thing that I can do is actually dig the line up. Me and Mike can dig it up. We can turn around and find out where the clogs at. I did call about a new valve for that line because if that valve was actually bad, it broke and it's laying in the way or something. A new valve is actually two hundred and I think forty dollars, I think that's what it is to rope down, have it planted down there. That's through L and J supply down in Benton. The other thing is too, is that's the only other alternative I actually got because what I'm doing right now, because it's so hectic to try to get to each other, everybody's grinding. I actually got a manhole cleanout, actually. I had to open them a little bit where it can come out when somebody flushes a hole. So that's kind of a situation that needs to be took care of as soon as possible. And we're just needing to know what we need to do on that, like, you know, so.
Is Alderman Cody involved in this?
Well, I, Cody's been involved with me. He said he was going to talk about it, hears and aye, if he would hear, and see if we could get a decision what we wanted to do. So all I need is whatever I need to do and contact some people to see what I can get done, so.
If you could get that with Alderman Cody and then I hope Cody can get with our clerk, he could probably move on pretty quickly.
Yeah.
So I think...
I mean, the only other alternative that me and Mike came up with was actually dig the valve up, cut the line because that's going to save cost of having a company come in and jetting it and it don't work. We're just going to have to dig it up and see what's going on. But if the valve is bad, then we're going to have to replace a valve. So that's all I got on that part, so.
Okay, thank you, Frankie. But one way or another, it needs to be fixed.
Right. I guess what I'm saying, Mayor, is that if we can get this detail down, we can figure out the beginning, middle, and ending to it. Figure out what you'd want to do with the condition of the clerk, we can move on that. But we need to go ahead and start the process, I guess. With Cody not being here, I hate to...
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. And I mean, Cody knows about it because Cody was with me on the job site, seeing what was going on. It was just trying to figure out which way we all want to go with the ordinance. Turn around, because right now, with the ground being wet, I don't even know if our backhoe would get up on that little hillside there and try to dig. I don't know that really. Because we're going to have to dig at least a four by four hole to actually get here and work and do what we need to do because I don't want the, with the ground being saturated, I don't need the ground to cave in or anything.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Wait, how, how long can you dump that now pit? But it keeps filling in the ground. I've got contaminated too much ground.
Well, that there, I mean, the pit being concrete, I mean, it is soaking in air.
Yep.
But fair enough, I mean, there ain't no other alternative to actually do anything because my hands are tied, so.
I know, that's what Frankie say.
I mean, so.
You're putting contamination in the ground and you keep doing it week after week. Not good.
Well, there's a certain sense of urgency to it.
Yeah.
I like going through the mic channels. I think reporting it to Cody, getting it written down, a way to approach it, getting approved, because they can do some thought. When will you, when will you see Alderman Cody again?
I'll probably see him more.
Could you tell them what we talked about at this meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I got a problem telling them. It's just he was, he knows that the money funds, that, you know, getting what we need or whatever is, you know, a very thin ice right now, so.
Right.
All right. Park and Center.
Nothing to report for that or any results.
Assistant for education, anybody wanna speak?
Yep.
Um, I need to talk about street department.
Street, I was thinking of, oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah. Well, she is, yeah, I did.
Yeah, street department. Um, I have a couple of, I got a little jokers to give us a bit on some repairs on some streets, patching. Um, and also the, there's an area out on Bartles, um, Industrial Drive. There's a. This one's from jokers, a couple of, uh, street repairs, patching, and also the culvert that's out there, uh, the, uh, maybe the water pipe out there on Bartles Drive. That is, um, getting to be pretty rough over there. But anyway, they gave us an estimate. I talked to Bowman, um, last week. They're working on a proposal for us also, and I just haven't had anything come back from Bowman yet. So they're working on it that for us. Uh, the same areas of street patching, um, and also with the Bartles Industrial. And, um, to also work on Fourth, Fourth Street. Some different areas for us. So when I get that, I'll let you know, and we'll have a couple of visits and see what we can work with to do that. The other thing is, I wanted to mention, and Frankie can probably help me out here. Um, I know you just talked about the beginning of the meeting, um, the John Deere tractor. Um, that we have an estimate from them for forty-three hundred dollars. But I talked to, had Frankie and, this is the one from John Deere. Uh, I had Frankie and Mike talk to Dave Vadi. He's going to come and look at a tractor for us and possibly give us a much, much better view of it for it.
Mr. Alderman, has he done work for us before?
Yes. Yes. So when I hear something from that, then I will definitely ask you also.
Quite an achievement.
Alderman, wait, can I ask you a question about this? So, uh, we see your budget total here on our budget right now. Are you planning on doing all this work within that?
Uh, no, these are just sort of different areas that I wanted to have it looked at. Doesn't mean that we have to have them all done at one time, just, um.
I already know.
Right, yes. So we listen. As far as the tractor goes, I know that that is not just the street department, it goes with all the departments, so that we have, you know, have to talk about all this.
Okay, do you have Bowman in?
Yes, he's gonna come over and look at it for us, so.
Good.
Have I got everybody covered now? Then we're gonna do citizen for case and page.
Me?
Okay, go.
I got a question. What, pile truck? Uh, this thing's a pretty nice truck. I found there's five things wrong with it right now that haven't been fixed. Why? There's money in the water, the street fund, especially for fixing equipment, and streets. How's that windshield get busted on that thing?
That windshield has been busted, not recently. There was a little hole when that thing was bought, there was a little pinhole in that thing.
There was?
Over time, with the cold, the hot, the cold, the hot, the last couple of years, that has gone stretching out.
Well, that was bought, there wasn't a hole there, but you weren't even on the border around it.
No. But that's what, I know, and that's what Frankie has said, there is a little pinhole in that windshield. And over the time, which I, I have a couple of, um, people, Dave even went and got, um, estimates for me to have it repaired.
They don't got a transmission line leaking. That, that bad, it's just a fix.
So how are you knowing all these things are not wrong with that?
Huh?
How do you know all these things are wrong with it?
I've been around long enough to talk to people, I know what's wrong with it. You gonna tell me what's wrong with it?
I don't know that transmission was wrong with it.
Why do you, transmission line leaking?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
I thought Mike told you, uh.
No.
Mike didn't tell you?
No.
Well.
I know that the transmission line is broken.
It's like, it's always going with that truck, it shouldn't have been fixed. You let them go, and it just get worse.
I bet that's something.
And, and we're working, it's what, we have to work to get those things fixed, but we also have to work about our budget first and get this. And I know that that money is in there for the street department and, and get those things fixed.
That one's fixed.
I know that.
General budget.
But I also want to get the streets fixed too, and different things fixed.
I know that, but if you don't fix these, they're gonna get worse.
Yes.
They're gonna have nice streets, we're not gonna have a truck again to use. Is you only gonna build a good.
But the windshield doesn't make a mechanic out of it, it does mechanics for it.
Well, the transmission does, and so does that one valve for the, uh, feeds the tarp and, or, I mean, the, uh, I'm on Franklin.
But David, you're aware of this.
I guess it's an audio device.
Well, it's a valve that helps the feed the fuel, wind center stress, it's not looking right. I'm just a bit.
Okay, there was some, some, something that you had told me about whenever we.
Yeah, we said that Eric was gonna look at it, but then that bad weather came in, and we didn't take it back out.
And we did have Eric look at one thing, and he gave us, um, something, uh, an estimate, not an estimate, but, uh, a work order that was different things that was wrong with it. And he also said that there's other things that need to be fixed too. I know that that thing's gonna be fixed with it. I know that, but that is not that, you know, I'm not trying to say that machine, that vehicle is not important to us. It is important to us.
Surely.
It is. And I'm not neglecting it, but I also have to do other things too. These things will get fixed.
I'll tell you what, fix the streets, and when you have nothing, nothing to take care of the streets, then you worry about them, huh?
But they will get fixed.
I think we got enough on this issue. Prioritize it. Keep it in mind, get it fixed.
Okay. I guess we can, if you're adjourned, making it the winter to work today.
I make a motion to be adjourned, R B.
No, second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed.